We'll have a pledge to the flag. I'll do it, thank you. Everybody rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Does that happen next week?
You're running over your coat.
This councilmember Burton.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Press it, sir.
Allman.
Here.
Allenees.
Here.
Mayor Stransky.
Yes.
The city council welcomes input from the audience. If there is a matter of business on the agenda that you are interested in, you may address the council when this matter is considered. If you wish to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. In order for everyone to be heard, please limit your comments to three minutes per person. The Brown Act regulations do not allow action to be taken on audience comments in which the subject is not listed on the agenda. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. While the city council welcomes public criticism of policies, procedures, programs, or services of the agency, behavior that disrupts, disturbs, impedes, or renders infeasible the orderly conduct of the meeting. And that includes but is not limited to use of profanity, slurs, yelling from the audience, threatening remarks, physically threatening conduct, or physical or verbal displays of disrespect will not be tolerated and the individual will be removed immediately. Is there anyone at this time that would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda?
You're a, yes, the lady in the green.
Do I just sit down here?
No, you do it up here.
Oh, good.
Hi.
Hello.
Can you hear me okay?
Oh, good. That's just for TV. There's, it doesn't help.
Oh, it doesn't even help. I don't have to do that. Okay. Greetings to everybody. I haven't been here in a long time, not since all the new people. I voted for some of you.
Don't tell me that.
But I did go to last Friday, which isn't very long ago, to the Mendo College Town Hall meeting where our congressman, Jared Huffman, was able to speak as well as Chris Rogers, our Assemblyman. It was, you know, it was a big deal and there were council members from Fort Bragg and even the mayor of Cloverdale was there and council members from Yuccaia. And you guys weren't there. So I'm finding out, I hope I will find out tonight, what happened, why weren't you there? And we need you to be there. This is important stuff going on in the world, always is, but especially now. So because of, I realized that you had, none of you were there. I was a little embarrassed, actually, but I, I don't know why you weren't there, but Jared Huffman himself offered to come to Willets and be part of a town hall meeting here. So as far as I know, we're in negotiations with his office and he's happy to come. We have to figure out timing and everything. And it can be right across the hall. And we've had town halls here in the past, not with big luminous characters like our congressman, but we have had them local and they've been so fruitful and we want to be able to hear what each other have to say. But especially at this time when Willets is going to be affected by the cuts from Doge and, and the Trump administration. Already we're seeing Food Bank, Senior Center, People's Own Social Security being at risk, Head Start. These are huge, these are huge cuts and it will affect, and even more, and they'll be affecting all of us here in Willetts. So we need your guidance, we need your information, we need education, we want to feel supported and helped by all of you. So I want to say, please, will you come to the next one? Will you come to the town hall when, when Huffman is going to be here? I don't know if Chris Rogers is coming or not, but at least Huffman has offered. So I'm hoping that you'll all be here and represent us as well as everybody else. So, thank you.
Can you announce your name for the?
I'm Melinda Clark.
Yes, go ahead.
I received in my bank statement $71.20 reimbursement from the city of Willetts. And I asked Manny and we can't find, find it. Where in the books that that $71.20 was definitely mailed to the wrong guy? I mean, most citizens would probably say, keep it, but that's not going to happen with me because you know my position. So we're going to look for that, but it could be more for other people. So I'm hoping that Manny and I can find that $71.20 in your books because it's in my account and it's not mine.
You can take three some dinner.
No, I can't do that because you know what I do. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
There's somebody that shows up like that. Yeah, we can't find this one.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Peggy Weber. I'm a neighbor of yours. I live on the West Side and I'm new to coming to these meetings and I noticed like last time it was canceled. So I'm just curious, how do we find out like what happens when the meetings are canceled? Like if there's decisions made and stuff? How do we find out? I mean, are there minutes? There's minutes from these meetings, but when we're?
When we're not here, there's no minutes.
And there's no meeting?
No meeting.
And there's no decisions?
Nothing.
Oh, cool. I hope we don't cancel too much. Okay, thank you.
Last call, anyone else? Thank you.
So we're moving on enactment of ordinances. There are none. The consent calendar. The city council considers matters listed under the consent calendar as routine. The council will take action with a single motion and will call vote. A council member may request the removal of an item or items from the consent calendar for separate discussion and subsequent action. The following items are presented are before the city council for approval or denial. And there are four sets of council minutes, February 26th, March 12th, March 21st, and March 28th.
March 13th, I'll call it.
March 13th, you're correct. You called me on that one.
I'm not March 28th.
Any, anybody up here?
I'd like to make, I'd review them. I'd like to make the motion to approve the consent calendar to be approved as presented.
I'd like to second.
Okay, do we want to call a roll?
No, public comment.
What?
Public comment.
Is there any public comment?
Public comments.
Of sets of minutes? And there is none, so we'll call vote?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Burton.
Hi.
Allman.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Allenees.
Yes.
Mayor Stransky.
Yes.
The monthly activity reports, matters that did not require action by the city council but are of public interest. There is the accounts payable, building permit, business license activity reports from March 2025, and they are all available in the packets. Commissions are, any public comment on those?
Public comment, please. Anybody? Yes.
Yes.
Oh, excuse me. You need to do it over here, please.
Okay, sorry.
Hey, Sheri.
My name is Sheri Ebbiam. I'm wondering where, where do we find those packets?
The packets available online, or if you'd like to get on the email list, I can email you the council packets when I distribute them to the council.
And do we just give, any of us give you our email address?
Sure can.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Robin.
The person just, that just asked, my name, Robin Leeler. The person that just asked about where the packets can be, they post one here at the desk and I come in and read it Monday or Tuesday before each council meeting.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Commissions, agencies, and authorities. The Willetts City Council meets concurrently as the Willetts City Planning Commission and City of Willetts Successor Agency. There are no topics for discussion. City manager reports and recommendations, there are none. The first item for department recommendations is to appoint Sheri Ebbiam to fill the vacancy on the Measure K Oversight Committee to ensure the committee has full complement of members. Presenting staff member is Manuel Rosso, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mayor. City council members, come to you with a resolution in order to be able to appoint Sheri Ebbiam to the Measure K Oversight Committee. She comes to us from multiple years of service as a teacher, 18 years, and nine years as a business director for the town of Middletown. I don't know if she's here right now.
She is.
Hello. So, yeah, so we haven't had a Measure K meeting since May of 2024, so we're hoping to get that one rolling again, get it back up and give a report on where our fund balances are with that. So having a full committee is definitely necessary for that to occur, so we would like to have that resolution approved.
Will you please stand up so we can all see? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I know Sheri, and let me just say this. If there are malfeasance, Sheri will find it. She's tenacious, she's dedicated. I worked with her on the Mental Health Measure B Committee, and she knows numbers better than I know the English language. And I think this is probably one of the best selections that we could have made, and I, I really thank Sheri for stepping up on this, on another volunteer position in the community. You're, you're an asset to our community and I, I just want the council to know that I would 100% recommend Sheri to fulfill the duties required.
Thank you. Any public comment? Yes.
Hi, my name is Linda Burns, and I was just wondering, although she's a wonderful gal and I know her as well, how did you all come to that decision? Because I know of other people that said that they wanted it as well, but I was wondering what the criteria was to get chosen.
Go ahead.
There was one, only one application submitted. The application notice went out in the paper, actually twice, and we only received one submittal. So Suprina Rodriguez wasn't it? I actually emailed Suprina the application and the notice. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments?
Ready for a motion?
Yes.
Does this take a motion?
Yes.
I move the staff recommendation.
I'd like to second, and I just want to thank Sheri for stepping up. You applied for the open position. I think what better way to get to know the council and our business of the city than to look at our finances? This is kind of like asking your, your accountant to look at you or your doctor to look at you, and I think it's going to be a good way for you to get acquainted with the city. And if, and I don't know you as good as Tom, but I've been at meetings where you've been there, and I believe that the oversight that we need on that Measure K Committee is important. That was one of the things I really pushed for, and the reason I, I ran again to be on the council was that we'll make sure that we spend the money on what we promised the voters we were going to spend it on. So I want you to be our conscience and make sure that that's what we're doing.
Thank you once. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
May I refer to the second?
Who did we have a second from?
Yes, from Allman.
No, Gonzalez.
Gonzalez, okay, okay.
Councilmember Burton.
Hi.
Allman.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Allenees.
Hi.
Mayor Stransky.
Yes.
Adoption of a resolution establishing the appropriations limit for the 2024-25 fiscal year pursuant to Article.
13, yeah.
13B of the Constitution of the State of California. Presenting staff member is Manuel Rosso, Finance Director.
So the GAN is a spending limitation that's on appropriations for revenues that we receive. So every year we have to do this calculation as a part of our budget. Last year, we, the budget got delayed and then other things have occurred that stalled out this process. So just to keep ourselves up in current, I'm presenting this, current GAN appropriations limit, so the amount in total for the calculated limit is $8,518,688, of which we have city appropriations of $5,231,630 that are eligible, which gives us about $3,287,058 less than the calculated limit. So I move to have, I request to have the appropriation, the resolution adopted for the budget.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, and I looked at this and I, I'm a COP and not a CPA. So the appropriations limit is 8227, $8,227 and change.
Yes.
And the appropriation for $5,231?
$5,231,000.
$5,231,000. So that $3 million difference, explain that.
So the $3 million difference is the, so we have the ability to set our appropriations up to $8.5 million, and we are $3 million less than that.
Oh, I see, okay.
So it's, it's usually a calculation that takes into account population increases or decreases along with the historical amounts of what we've had in the past.
So there's a, a schedule that came up with $8 million and some?
Yes.
And, and we're spending less than what the schedule says, what the state legislature says that we should be spending?
Yes.
Thank you.
Manny, is this something you do, it seems like every year you come in because things change and the limits change, and so you, you have to tweak it every year? Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's not something that's being done out of the blue? This, you'll be back maybe next year doing the same thing?
I'll be back in a couple months doing the exact same thing.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to put that out for the public, that it's not like some weird looking thing we're doing behind the scenes, that this is just the way government operates and we're just trying to be transparent.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. We're deep into the 2425 budget. Is this?
I apologize.
And does that, is this like later than it should have been?
Yes, it's later than it should have been.
Okay. Where in the next budget cycle will we see this again?
You'll actually see this sometime at the end of May, early June. Usually price and population, letter goes out from the Department of Finance around the end of May. So we have to then post it for about two weeks after that and then turn around and
So at this point, we're just making sure that we're crossing our keys, dotting our i's?
Exactly.
Because most of this is already completed. We're just making sure we're following the law, not that there's a new one coming up and we'll be up on that.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from up here? The audience, anybody in the audience that wants to have a question with us? Yes.
So a couple of questions. So we could, the limit was about eight and a half million. We appropriated about 5.2 million, about 60%. Is that because that's what we could afford? That's the first question. And the second question, historically, is that typical, that we would appropriate about 60% of the money?
We, our appropriations are subject to what we, what we anticipate is our revenue coming in. So it's pretty much about how we can afford, how much we can afford. And the appropriations limit is just a guiding hand that ensures that we do not go spending, you know, runaway spending or anything like that, using more money or, yeah, spending more money than we have coming in.
So this was originally established in 78, 79, and then they've done a COP to it, or it's a cost of living adjustment, or?
Yes.
It's just been incrementally increased. It really is void of any real thing other than the, some, some factor of?
That is correct, yes. So it had an original establishment back in, in the 70s, and then every year the population factor increases it or decreases it just by a certain amount. But there's two parts of the factor that occur on the regular, and the calculations end with the actual resolution, or not with the resolution, but with the agenda summary itself. And so the price factor is a, is an increase in terms of inflation and everything like that. It's something that comes out from the Department of Finance, and then we also get a population either increase or decrease. And you'll notice that the population factor actually had a decrease associated with it, but the price factor increased by 1.0362. So it totaled an amount of an adjustment factor of 1.0354.
Yeah, I don't think that the population factor has been a significant contributor one way or the other since 1978.
Yeah, very true. It's, if, if your population does increase, then it factors in that as well. So if like we had, we grew massively and our population represented that, then, then we would have that as a part of the calculation.
And these are directed towards, towards general fund expenses.
Yes, yeah, so it's the appropriations associated with the revenues that are taxed. So these are the taxes that we receive for sales tax, property tax, things like that.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
So I, I thought I, I alluded to this, but, so is this 5.2 million, is that a decrease compared to the last year or two, or are revenues dropped?
I would have to look, but I believe so. If my memory serves correctly, we did do a decrease in the amounts because we were, I was predicting a decrease in our sales tax. So there was a reduction.
Thanks, Sheri. Any other public comment? Yes, bear.
Thanks, Bear Camroff, and I'm a local resident, some background in finance, but since this is a year ago, budget limit sounds like an arbitrary figure? Because if you, since this is a year later, we already know the numbers, so it looks like you spent 5.2 million that year in expenses, and we have a reserve of 3 million, is that what it means, a cushion?
No, no, unfortunately, it's what it is, is it allows us the opportunity in order to be able to set our appropriations at 8.5. It has, it's not taken into account exactly how much we have or how much, you know, how much we have in our reserves. It's more along the lines of, it allows us the ability to set our appropriations at that limit, but we also have to look at what we actually have in terms of finances coming in. So we do a projection on our sales tax every year and then we kind of, and that's during the budget process.
What does that 3 million leftover, you might say, wouldn't it, does that mean we got that in the bank?
No, unfortunately not. It just means that?
Do we have any money in the bank?
This is kind of silent on it?
I'm just, don't understand it.
Yeah.
So do we have money in the bank?
We do have money in the bank to spend, but not 3 million. We have it, we have it budgeted. We spend our money based on appropriations.
Any other public comment? We need to vote on this.
Okay, I would like to move the recommended resolution of the city council of the city of Willetts adopting the appropriations limit for fiscal year 2024-25 pursuant to Article 13B of the Constitution of the State of California.
I would like to second that motion.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Allman.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Allenees.
Yes.
Mayor Stransky.
Yes.
The next item is discussion and possible action to approve an agreement authorizing the Willetts Farmers Market to operate in Budschneider Park.
That's.
Did I skip a seat? I am so sorry. The First Amendment to the five-year agreement approved September 25, 2024 between the Willetts Chamber of Commerce and the Willetts City of Willetts for a quarterly allocation of the term named occupancy tax.
So this is an amendment to the agreement that we have with, with the Chamber of Commerce, Commerce, sorry, and it is to change the date at which we provide payment to the chamber from 30 days to six weeks. And the reason for that is because the chamber wanted to be able to have the actual collections from the TOT tax, to be, you know, the exact amount that was collected during that particular period of time. So every quarter we give them approximately 15.11% of the taxes collected per TOT. And in order, because there's a 30-day limitation on how much, 30-day limitation on us in order to be able to do the dispersment, and they have 30 days in order to be able to provide us the actual tax information, there's been a gap on what we have provided. And what we did after that was we did a true-up at the end of the year. So this is actually giving us a little bit more time so that we can do the calculation for the actual amounts that were received during that period of time. And the Chamber of Commerce agreed to also have this taken care of.
So this works for you and it works for the chamber then?
Yes, my understanding is that's the case.
But this has already been voted on in September 24th of last year, moving from 11.24 to 15.24.
Yes, yes.
And so this is just a formality of putting a second on what the council already voted last year?
No, it's actually, so what the council voted on last year was the movement from 11.11 to 15.11. This is just allowing us a little bit more time in order to be able to disperse those funds.
Got it, okay.
Any other public comment?
I move. I will second.
The lawyers?
Councilmember Allman. Group Burton.
Yes.
Councilmember Allman.
I'm saying I, as president of the city, or the Chamber of Commerce, has nodded that you're okay with this, so I.
Yes.
Gonzalez. Allenees.
Hi.
Mayor Stransky.
Yes.
Okay, and now we are moving on to discussion and possible action to approve an agreement authorizing the Willetts Farmers Market to operate in Budschneider Park, and our presenting staff member is Connor Stack, our City Planner.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, I'm bringing forward the, as stated, the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Willetts Farmers Market to operate from Farmers Market in Budschneider Park from, and this is going to be a little bit different, there have been some adjustments in the agreement versus what was released in the agenda that's been approved, and you guys have the correct ones, adjusted for the public as well. The timeline had been moved with discussion of Farmers Market from a 1:30, from, let me check what you guys have here, from a 1:30 to 6:30 to a noon to 6:30, to adjust for set of times, enclosure to make.
11.11 to 15.111. This is just allowing us a little bit more time in order to be able to disperse those funds.
Got it, okay.
Any other pub, public comment?
I move. I will second.
The lawyers?
Councilmember Almond? Ruth Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Almond?
I'm saying I, as President of the City Council, or the Chamber of Commerce, has nodded that you're okay with this, so I...
Yes.
Gonzalez? Alany?
Oh, yeah.
Mayor Shkansky?
Yes.
Okay, and now we are moving on to discussion and possible action to approve an agreement authorizing the Willetts Farmers Market to operate in Bud Snyder Park. And our presenting staff member is Connor Stack, our City Planner.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, I'm bringing forward the stated resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Willetts Farmers Market to operate Farmer's Market in Bud Snyder Park from, and this is going to be a little bit different, there have been some adjustments in the agreement versus what was released in the agenda that's been approved, and you guys have the correct ones, adjusted for the public as well. Um, the timeline had been moved with discussion of Farmers Market from a 1:30, from, let me check what you guys have here, from a 1:30, 6:30 to a noon to 6:30, um, to adjust for setup times, enclosure, to make sure they have enough time to set up and be prepared. And that sort of change in the timeline of agreement still fits within what we have in our municipal code currently, um, as long as you guys pass the resolution for that. In addition, some changes, uh, with this resolution, uh, the Farmers Market will be acting sort of on the north side of Bud Snyder Park now, um, with their cars parked there. And previously, that's where they acted, but there's three differences sort of between what they had before and what the agreements we have at the Farmers Market versus now. The first being the difference in time suggests in the previous contract we had, it was in, back in 2018, and now things have moved. And again, this was an error that you guys have. Uh, that's been adjusted from 2018 to 2025 of this year, from April to October. Uh, the second being that there was a, um, resolution for repair and maintenance. So, now in the agreement, basically, there is a part of the agreement stating that if there's any damages done, then a conversation will happen between, um, the Farmers Market and Services and Facilities to make sure that Bud Snyder Park is being taken care of. And if any small changes need to happen to make sure things go smoothly, they can. Uh, the third being, uh, check this. I apologize, that was it. It's the separation of time and the, uh, knowing what the Services and Facilities Director approval for maintenance.
Can we add the gazebo so there's not going to have to be another agreement when the gazebo is built on the north side? I mean, or is that just a given? I guess, Michael, I guess, is that just a given in the Farmers Market? Well, I don't want to waste government time in saying, now we need a resolution to use a gazebo and we can take care of it all right now.
The agreement addresses that.
Okay.
The agreement addresses that the parties contemplate the gazebo being available September, August or September, and that they will adjust their location toward the gazebo.
If they want.
If it's ready.
Got it, thanks.
And I believe in the agreement as well, there's talk about, as it is there, if the Farmers Market chooses to continue, that's something that can be discussed and approved once more, once that comes up at the end of the season.
Connor, any comment from up here? Gary.
Connor, just a quick question. I'm sure you probably already addressed this with the interested parties around the park, but you checked with the fire department and the neighboring businesses and MTA, because people have been used to not...
Yeah, everyone within 300 feet of the area has been sent mail, and I've already done this change.
Okay. And that bus doesn't use that, or the school doesn't use the, around the park for anything?
So far, nothing's come up that nature.
Okay.
Is there a fee for the vendors to participate, participate in the Farmers Market?
Not with the city.
No.
No, I'd be within the organization.
Mr. Foley's here. Will he come up?
The answer was yes. There's a stall fee that is based on gross sales for the day. So, that's the, that's the basic. And it's around 10% or it varies. We've got a complicated schedule, yeah.
Is there a, is there a, uh, limit on the non-produce vendors, or is there any...
Yes, there, there is a limit. The, the association was set up as a farmers' association, and so, we try to have non-farmer, non-food vendors, that is, craft vendors, make up no more than 25% of, of the vendors. And it's really, it's been lower than that. There are some markets, like the Fort Rag Market, that don't allow craft vendors at all, but we've always allowed craft vendors. And it's always been a small proportion. But that's an important thing, because some farmers' markets have devolved into, you know, craft fairs.
Exactly.
And hardly any farmers show up.
Right.
That's not what's happening here.
And, and I think it's a little unfair to our downtown businesses that are trying to sell durable goods.
Right, could be. These are very small startup businesses.
If I might speak, I might be able to give a bit of clarification, I believe.
Sure, it's up here. I believe in the attachments that you guys have, that there is the exact policies that you stated from the medicine or kind of Farmers Market, um, with those ratios of how many stalls are allowed, um, that are sort of crafts versus otherwise. Um, and I think I attached it specifically for that, because that was a query that I think I, it came up, that I wanted to make sure was addressed in the paper.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to add that we're, we're here because, um, when we left the park in 2016 for the removal of the elm trees, we were kind of kicked around for a bit, but found a way to move downtown, and I was happy with that. It was good for downtown, it was good for us, we got new people off the streets, and it's continued to be good for us, but we've run out of options. Unless you want to let us use West Commercial Street, close that off one afternoon a week, Thursday afternoons, which I've told is a non-starter, um, this is our preferred option. And in fact, it's probably not a month that's gone by since we moved from City Park when somebody hasn't asked me, "When are we going to go back to the park?" So, there's a lot of public support for going back. Thank you, Mr. Foley.
Larry?
Any...
I need to add, um, report that there was an update to the resolution. There was a whereas added, the licensee requests, and the City Council concurs that the Farmers Market will conduct its market operations on Thursday afternoons during the period of April 1st through October 31st, and that traffic restrictions and parking regulations shall be imposed on each such market day from noon to 6:30 PM, notwithstanding the days and times set forth within Willetts Municipal Code, Chapter 10.74.010. That was the add to the resolution.
Thank you. Any comment from up here? Gary?
Yeah, I would just like to move the, uh, recommended action and approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement with the Willetts Farmers Market. As our clerk has explained the dates.
I'll second with a sincere appreciation to Michael and the vendors.
How are we going to monitor the parking? I, I live right across.
Come up here, please.
Actually, my voice is loud enough, you can't even hear.
It's, it's for the TV.
Oh, wow. I, I just wonder what provision is made for parking? There's not a lot.
There are provisions made for complaints. Yeah, I mean, and you live there, Kathy, so, I mean, the best, we don't want to address something that's not a problem, we want to address a problem. And the police chief's here, and, and if there's a complaint, obviously, the city's going to respond to complaints.
And I can just speak, historically, the issue was, um, when they initially closed down the street, you know, being able to get through, so obviously, there'd be some adjustments for you to, um, once, once they closed the street down, going one way versus the other until they, and they open it up again. Um, I don't think you'll have people wandering to park where you're at, because by then the, the road will be closed, it's going to be...
And they won't be able to get back there.
You know, so, so it'll be kind of, so, that'll be the adjustment there. In the past, they've worked with us, and, uh, people have been able to get to and from. It was that initial shutdown while they unloaded for safety reasons. So, I think that it's one of those that people in the area in the past would just kind of modify when, when they left a park and then...
Is that all around the park or just along State?
Along State there. And now, obviously, we can't control, obviously, there's folks that are going to want to get closer, like any venue, you know, whether it's Fourth of July or not, some people want to be right there, and they can figure out a way to get in, or they might, you know? If they can legally get in, they, they might want to park there, but most of the time, it's been over here at the city or, you know, up and down, uh, Commercial Street where people park.
We certainly do make...
Helps if I work 12 hours a day and I won't have to go home.
You do it after 50 years.
What's your last name?
Boullier. Have you seen it lately?
I've seen it many times.
Not in the police law.
No.
But, but, Michael, for clarification, the people that live in those houses on State Street that are impacted by the, by that, there, there's got to be sensitivity and accommodation to people getting in and out their driveways, no matter, uh, what's going on, doesn't there?
Yes, yeah, and that's, that's the arrangement that we worked out, talking to facilities, um, about the street closure, that it would be closed to all traffic except vendors and residents. And vendors may not park on the resident's side. I'm directing the vendors to find parking across the street, this parking lot and...
On the one right.
And the one right down around the corner. Yeah, yeah. And I'm, I'm going to be pretty fierce about that, because my concern is parking too. And if we move into the pavilion, then very few vendors will be allowed to be on the street at all, from, by me, as the market manager. So, yeah, we're sensitive for that. Yeah, thank you.
So, I just wanted to clarify, that in addition to the restriction on how many non-food vendors are there, what are the restrictions for the food vendors? They have to either be producing the food themselves that they're selling, or what, I, I know that there was some, you know, rules about that, that people couldn't just import food from somewhere and then sell it, you know, essentially, sort of details.
Right, that, that is the understanding, and, and the expectation is for any product, including craft products, that, that the vendor brings to sell, and this is apart from produce and apart from meat and eggs, at least 75% of it should be produced by them or sourced locally. So, that's the, that's the provision. Again, it's to support local small businesses as much as possible. For egg vendors, 100% of it, 100% of what's on your table has to come off your farm. That's CDFA.
Any other comment from Bear?
Hey, yeah, I'm Bear Camroff. I live across the street from City Park, and I was there the last time the Farmers Market was there, which was a, a parking nuisance, but we managed to deal with it, but we appreciate then and now the Farmers Market coming back. But, um, it was always a bit of a hassle, but things are, I'm not opposing it whatsoever, but I've watched, realized that things are quite different today than they were then. First of all, the fire department has a new firehouse, and their needs for their fired engines and their, um, volunteers means that they've cut off approximately half the parking that was used previously on Humble Street. So, we've lost that. And the other major change is we now have the North Spur Brewery, which is a very popular, well-liked, and, uh, at North Spur, as you probably know, has no all-street parking. And in the afternoons, starting around 4 o'clock or so, because I'm there, uh, the first state, the first block of State Street is almost completely full, the second block and Humble Street, depending on the weather, is partially full, and on a sunny Thursday afternoon, we are going to have a bit of a nightmare in the parking department. I understand the City Hall is going to encourage people to park in the City Hall parking lot, and Dusty Dooley was telling me that the north end of the Skunk Train parking lot apparently is, is a city parking lot or something, and we can encourage people to park down there, and hopefully, they will. Though a little half-block of Humble Street where my house is, um, because it's a half a block and everybody in the world goes down there trying to find a place to park, we're hoping that we'll reserve that for vendors, maybe who can just leave it there all day, because we used to have fender vendors down there, people don't know how to make a U-turn when they're stuck in there. And, um, anyway, I do welcome it back, but I really feel like we're going to have a major parking problem, and unfortunately, I wish I had an answer, but, um, just to give you a heads up. Thank you, Bear. And one more thing, excuse me, I really hope, Michael, that you will encourage the trailer not to bring a generator with it, the one that serves sandwiches.
Yes. You need, come up, please.
Sorry, having a bit of trouble with my low blood pressure, but I'm here. Hi, I'm Linda Burns, and my question is for the local business in that area, like preschool. I'm a volunteer grandma over there, and I have been, often on since it's been there. And I've been there before when you had Farmers Market at the park, and unfortunately, it makes it very dangerous for the children coming out of the preschool with their parents, because people are panicking about getting to the park and finding a parking spot, and they go flying through that parking lot. So, I was the person that just took it upon myself to stand out there and tell them, "No, this is not a turnaround spot, this is not a parking spot for you, these are children that I care about, and they belong to the people in the community, this is, you know, just not supposed to happen." How do we make that safe? You can't put something across it, because you have people that need to come and go and pick up their kids.
I, I would suggest that education is the best way to handle something like this. So, whether the city puts out a memorandum that you can give to parents, or you put out a memorandum that we, you can give to parents, and just advising them pickup time, drop-off time during these hours, it's going to be a congested area, please, you know, watch for kids, nobody's more important than kids, we all know that. Kathy, and, and so, we, we want to educate as many people as possible, so bad things don't happen. I, I think the police chief could probably help you on some kind of memorandum on this one, that you could just photocopy and give to every parent that, and put it in a little bag to the kids, so that they know.
Yes, the parents are pretty aware of it, it's, it's happened before, so they want to know and make sure that their kids are safe. But the thing is, is we've had parents that were almost hit as well with their kid in hand, because somebody is running late to unload and then re-park, or they're running late to get to the market and there is no parking, so they're zooming through there. I know, because I was the parking attendant, you might say, because it was very scary. I don't see, I don't, how, do you just put up signs saying, you know, "You can be towed", you, you, you have kids, big signs of kids, or what?
I don't know the answer to that, other than education, but maybe if you have a specific parent that's forever being dangerous, Mr. Foley would be the person to talk with. I'm not asking you to be representative of the police department.
It's not the parents, it's the people going to the Farmers Market.
Right, yeah.
That are putting the parents and kids in danger.
I don't think there's a perfect answer to your problem, other than education.
And so, that is a big concern. Uh, Springer's not here, but I was sitting over there thinking, "Boy, I remember this last time." And I remember chasing down people that just come flying through there, because they didn't see a parking spot, so now they want to get the heck out of there, be on to find another one. And I've crossed the street and said, "Hey, that's not cool," you know? "I'll do it again."
I think just that, having that open line of communication, you, you know who Mr. Foley is, uh, obviously, you, you met our police chief, so if somebody is, if it's the usual suspect, so to speak, then that, letting Mr. Foley know so that he can address it, and that we, you know, maybe call the police department and say, "Hey, I talked to a guy in a green Chevy and blah, 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 and talked to Mr. Foley," so that if that person does it again, or whatever, they could be addressed and...
You were the police chief back then, and, um, I, I made quite a few calls, and I walked over to the police department, "Hey, you're right."
And we tried, yeah, and we tried to address it when we could, and so, again, it's, it's not a catch-all with, all the time, but I think what you can do is have that line of communication with Mr. Foley, so that they know, uh, if it's a specific bad actor on their part, they can deal with it.
I see.
And that's, and that's just, we're in a small town, we should be able to just say, "Hey, uh, Mr. Foley, this guy's doing this," or, "Hey..."
I've been threatened before when I've approached people to say, "Hey, look, come on, you got..."
And that's why we, probably we don't want you, you know, you basically be a good reporting person and say, "This guy's doing this," so that if that person's becoming a problem, I don't think Mr. Foley wants to deal with it on a regular basis, so, all right.
All righty, thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Regarding this last comment also, could I, could I ask the...
Regarding this last comment also, could I, could I ask the interim chief, it's possible to have maybe a presence there for the first couple of times? Even a community car, just to people know that they're being watched, please slow down, please note mind your neighbors, and not necessarily every, every week, that's an extensive thing, but maybe for those couple of weeks.
Yeah, thank you. So Mike Kersh, interim police chief. Good evening, council. Happy to be here. And this, this is kind of a new scenario for me. The police department is right across the street. Please don't approach anybody, because, you know, road rage incidents and these things happen, so it's not safe. You're welcome to just come to the police department, we're always there. So do that. I think it's a good idea to work with, directly with the market as well. I don't want to guarantee a police presence, like.
Like from 12 to 6.
Police presence. If the first day is of the market. We'll be there May 1st. We can do that, that's a good idea. So we'll, people will have a presence, uh, May 1st, and again, contact the police department when you're having problems, and we'll be happy to respond. And if the market's that busy, that's really cool, right?
That's a good problem now.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
I don't think that's an issue any school in town would sympathize with.
Do we have any other public comment?
So the motion is second, motion was made by Jerry Gonzalez, Tom Almond, seconded, Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Almond.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Polani.
Hi.
Mayor's counsel.
Yes. Can I vote, because I'm, the last times I couldn't vote on anything to do with the park.
Well, that was involving, um, public improvements of the park and financial expenses of the city. I don't think that.
Okay. I just wanted to let know that, because I had property close enough to the park that I could not vote on anything that happened in the park, so, um, I just wanted everybody to know that this was, this is all news to me. Thank you.
The next item is city council announcements, communications, and reports. Let's see who went to meetings last week.
I'm waiting to see if this is, I can go if everybody's still looking.
People are still clear now.
I, I had a meeting, so. I'll, I'll go by, um.
Once everybody's cleared out.
Yeah, let's wait, yeah. Okay. I had LAPD on April 7th, and, um.
It's really noisy.
Hey, folks, if you want to talk, you want to head out, or if you want to stay, otherwise I can wait till you're done. Thank you.
I was just asking where we are on the page, sorry.
All right. And I went to LAPD, and what we discussed there is we had a public hearing on the Potter Valley Irrigation Municipal Service Review and Sphere of Influence. We also had a public hearing on our proposed budget and work program for 2025, '26. Including with that, we did discuss raising our apportionment fees, that a lot of the, the cities are all charged, and the, uh, and the special districts are charged, but, because that's a function of LAPD to review, so, um, there was some healthy discussion there. We had a workshop on our Westport County Water District Draft Municipal Service Review and a Russian River Flood Control District Service Review and Sphere of Influence update. Also, for the purposes of the council, CalCities put out a action alert, asking us to oppose SB 634 Perez homeless civil criminal penalties. They're trying to float a, uh, a bill to basically limit what the cities, counties can do, and they're asking for an opposition letter. I gave you guys all a copy of the recommended letter, and I was just hoping if there was an agreement that, uh, if you look at that letter, that, and you agree with it, that we can have the city draft a copy for the mayor to sign. That's what our League of Cities rep was asking us to do. In the past, we'd have the city manager just do it on our behalf, but at this point, it's something, so.
I don't think that we, as a council, can do it, because it's not on the agenda to take action.
Yeah, so.
That's true.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to kind of throw that out there, so. So individually, as, as council members, um.
When does it need to be in?
I think at the end of the month, so it could come back.
Why don't we put it on the agenda for next month, for next, in two weeks?
I think it's best just to leave it to individuals to decide.
Okay.
That's a good idea. Thank you very much.
All right, that's all I have.
Anybody else?
Yeah, on, uh, May 26th, I attended the, uh, the Mendocino Transit Authority, MTA, meeting, and, and most of that meeting was focusing on preparing for the budget for the 25, uh, '26 year, um, including going over through the financial and the capitalization policies. There was very little new business, other than just taking care of the financials and preparing for the next financial year.
May 24th, Councilman Alanese and I went to, we had a.
You mean March?
I'm sorry, March, I'm sorry, March. We had a finance committee meeting here, which was well-attended. It was the first finance committee, um, since, meeting since September, and, um, certainly there was a, a chance to be briefed on, on the numbers, and I, I, I'm sure those numbers are on the internet now, on our webpage, Finance Committee, and looking at Manny. I mean, there's too many numbers for me to sit here and brief everybody on, but if somebody wants a copy of what was presented to Finance Committee, would that be available to them?
Yes.
Okay. I, I would like a copy of the auditor's report.
Yeah.
The audited financial statement.
We can make sure that we get, we need to get a copy.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, one more thing. So, so Manny, um, it's our understanding that the 22, 23 audit had been completed.
The 22, 23 audit is completed, so.
It was, I was, my thought that it was going to be on tonight's agenda, but it's not on the agenda.
No, it's not yet.
Um, so will it be on, if we have it on the agenda in two weeks, will you, will everything be ready for public dissemination, and we can talk about it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else?
So when, when is the, the 23, 24 audited financial statement going to be done?
Currently actively working on it now. Now, we are, uh, doing the journal entry in order to be able to move fund balance. So basically, what's going on is, the old ACS system has one last journal entry to do, which is to set up the fund balances for movement or migration over to the new Spring Software System. Once that happens, then we reconcile the bank, um, the bank information and everything like that, that is, that has already been applied, and make sure that it matches up to what we have in our bank records. And then we do our, um, scheduling and everything like that, schedules for compensated absences, everything, and then go through our audit. So we will finally be catching up on that. My hope is, is that we get this audit done as quickly as possible, and I want it done by, um, mid to end of May. I'm hoping for that, really shooting for that.
Isn't there a statute about when that, those audits are supposed to be completed?
Audits are supposed to be complete within, uh, six months after the fiscal year end, and we haven't been in compliance with that for a very long time, and we're trying to get to there now. When I first started, it was about three years.
Are there penalties for that?
Uh, no, but there are some issues that, you know, things that you have to do in order to be able to cover it, which takes time, effort, and energy, in order to be able to get our continuing disclosures out. And so it will be a welcome relief to have the audits completed, so that I don't have to do preliminary scheduling for our continuing disclosures. So it just creates more work when we're behind like this.
Are we going to be able to put together an accurate budget for '25, '26 without numbers from '23, '24?
So, um, each budget is independent. We would be looking at what we have available in terms of funding for taxes and everything like that, so the budget will stand on its own, we're going to be very conservative with it, because there has been quite a bit of spending that has occurred during the '23, '24 fiscal year, and the '24, '25 fiscal year. So, so far to date, this.
Anybody else up here? Okay, I went, I was the substitute and went to the Mendocino, uh, Council of Governments, and, uh, it's the first time I've been since probably 15 years, and it has changed quite a bit. The, probably the number one thing that I came across is that, um, they wanted it to change the top, the name of the joint powers agreement, to add and add energy and climate-related programs, and that was quite a subject of debate, and the, uh, in the, uh, and they finally, uh, worked out a way, the staff worked out a way that it would work in the name of the, uh, of the, you know, with the whole project, in other words, uh, it's for media and it's for power and whatever, and they just wanted to add that, and, uh, they worked it out. And I thought that Chairman Hashcheck did a really good job of, of handling the debate, and I thought that he did a really good job. And then approval of the minutes, like we had here, and, uh, then the expression, uh, regular, uh, Caltrans, different one, uh, traffic study, uh, was another one, and the safest way that Caltrans is coming up with is that roundabouts are the thing, much safer than the stoplights, because it's just, that's the way it is. And I was surprised, but, uh, that's what they said. I, I, I have no way to know one way or the other, but I'm just saying that that was a surprise to me.
We could use one at Blosser in '20. We could use one at Blosser in '20.
Agreed. Okay. We'll have to, have to make it, okay, make it happen. Okay. And the, um, there's a, a bill, a, is a bill, assembly bill, uh, by Rogers that allows Caltrans to fund public utility relocation and performance necessary on highway infrastructure, and, and it has to do with the road in Hopland, and, uh, of who's going to pay the bill on moving all of the utilities out big enough so that they can drive through Hopland. And, uh, so we wrote a letter saying that we didn't. They voted to have a, a letter written to the, the Caltrans saying that, that, um, that we thought that the Caltrans should have to pay for. That's really essentially what happened. And, uh, that's probably all of the things that were, uh, I thought were interesting out of the whole thing, and, and, uh, as I say, it's been a lot of years since I've been there, and, uh, some new people and some people that seem to always be at these things, and that's. Anyhow, thank you very much. Any other, anybody else have anything to say about meetings that they've been to?
There any good and welfare?
Go ahead, good and welfare.
Do you think Silverdrad still has tickets for their tri-tip dinner, if they're still out there? We get home at the high school, I think. So that's out there, unless you know.
At the high school, the 101 trailer at RV Monkey Ranch. This is the tri-tip Silverdrad dinner.
When, when is it?
Oh, it's this Friday. You can pick it up between 4:00 and 6:00, you got to buy tickets ahead of time. But it takes a great cost. Anything else?
Yes.
Good evening, Stuart Handy for the record. I've been informed by some people on the QT. The ladies in the back. That someone in this room, who's a very dedicated and worthy person, should be given a very happy birthday wish, Dolores.
Is today, is today your birthday?
A simple request, maybe a happy birthday, maybe a little happy birthday song, you know?
No.
No? I can still withdraw that request?
Honey, it's not on the agenda, so we can't vote on it. But we all wish you a happy birthday.
You don't need to vote on that. It's going to happen anyway.
Thank you.
There you go. Don't throw stones.
Okay. Dolores?
Okay, we are now, um, done with the open session. It's been a closed session at this time pursuant to Government Act Section 54957, consideration impossible appointment of an interim city manager. Is there anyone that would like to speak, uh, public comment?
Anybody?
Say anything, John?
No.
Anyone? Yes.
Um, hi, my name is Linda Burns, and I was here at a, one of the city council meetings, and y'all adjourned, so that you could do your private session, and the old city manager was still here, and y'all went in that room back over there with your meeting. Suprema and I went out in the hallway, we went to the restroom. She came out before me, I stopped to get a drink of water, but the shouting from that room berating him, "It's not here," was horrible. Absolutely disgusting and horrible. Finally, Suprema says, I said, and she came over and she says, "Mom, let's be respectful." She goes, "That's not supposed to happen, they're not supposed to be yelling like that." I says, "No, they're not. I remember when some of yous did it to her when she first started here." When you, you know, the four and one votes all the time? I could hear it right there from the hallway. Then she'd come out with her face all chastised, "It's okay, Mom, it's okay, I got it." That gentleman should have never have gone through that. Whatever it was about, I heard quite a bit of it. She says, "To be respectful, let's move on down here." And we did. Y'all came out several times, saw us sitting there.
I did not come out.
You, yes, you did, and you were with her. Yes, you did.
No, she came out one time.
She came out once.
Hey, hey, excuse me. Does not, anybody?
Sorry.
That's it.
Anyways, we were sitting right there, and, no, Suprema says, "We're not going over there, whatever they're doing is doing." I just want you to know, I heard it, I thought it was disgusting.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Kavanaugh, and I'm sorry, I was at a city council meeting where the city manager actually spoke up and was screaming back, so I think it was going both ways. I wasn't here to listen in on a closed meeting, but I was here during a city council meeting where he was doing the same thing to somebody that wasn't speaking loudly in the first place. So take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, adjourn until for an executive session, please, closed session.
Report out from closed session at 8:44.
The Willett City Council has entered into a negotiations with a candidate for acting, acting city manager.
acting city manager. No added information will be presented at this time.
And we are done with closed session at 8:45.